I'd like to open the Select Board meeting of Sherburne on December 1st, believe it or not, 2022. We're already in December. And we're going to start with an executive session. So I'd like to ask the Assistant Town Administrator to read the agenda for the executive session only.
Good evening, everybody. Now that the open session has begun, we'll go in for two items. Item number one is to discuss the strategy with respect to threatened potential litigation. If the Chair so declares that an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the litigating position of the Select Board in the town, and the Chair does so declare to discuss the matter of Five Star Building Corporation versus the Town of Sherburne pursuant to Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, 3 and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus Decam, 449 Mass., 444, 2007. Item number two is meeting with Town Council and Executive Session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, 3, 6 and 7, and Suffolk Construction versus Decam, 449 Mass., 444, parentheses, 2007, to discuss 31 Hunting Lane, 41 North Main Street in Iguolabasi et al. versus the Town of Sherburne, Number 21, Miscellaneous PS 000193, parentheses, HPS. You'll need a second and a roll call.
Thank you. Before we do, are there any amendments or adjustments to the agenda? Okay, do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll second your motion.
All right, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well, and I do declare the necessity to enter executive session to discuss these two items that were read. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. Can you pause the recording, please, Diane?
Yes.
So I'm welcoming everyone this evening to the open session of the Sherburne Select Board on December 1st, 2022. And we're going to start by having the Assistant Town Administrator read the open session agenda, please.
Good evening. Now that the meeting's been called to order, after I read the agenda, the Board can vote to either approve the agenda as presented or to amend it. After that, there is a public comment section, but I have not received any word from anybody that they have a public comment, except Jeff, I think you may have a quick little something to say. Item number one is the consent agenda, which is the payroll warrant draft minutes of November 3rd, the next scheduled meeting of December 15th, and we're looking for a one-day liquor license for Pauline Bounds for the Community Center Foundation for December 12th, 2022. Item number two is the update of the 350th Town Celebration with George Fisk. Item number three is consideration of appointments to the Sherburne Arts Council, Patricia Caldercott, for term to expire June 15th, 2025, Arlene Chapin for term to expire June 15th, 2025, and Elizabeth Panagoulis for a term to expire June 15th, 2025. Also, a consideration of appointment to the Cable TV Advisory Board for Art Crandall for term to expire on June 15th, 2025. At 7:30 is our annual tax classification hearing, which will be conducted by Wendy Alassi of Towns Assessor. Item number five is the consideration of proving a common letter to mass housing regarding Greenwood Homes 40B. The letter is due into mass housing by December 5th, 2022. Item number six is the Washington Street 40B. We have a letter from the Department of Housing and Community Development, and we are going to consider sending a letter requesting a 30-day extension. Item number seven is the review of the 2023 Annual Town Meeting timeline, and the Board needs to consider tonight setting the dates to open and close the warrant for the 2023 Annual Town Meeting. Item number eight is routine business, Select Board reports.
Thank you, Diane. Do I have any amendments or recommendations for changes in the agenda?
Just consistent.
We talked about moving the, since we're starting a little later, we're going to do the public hearing for the tax classification first, so.
We're going to do the item four first. It's a hard start at 7:30.
Well, I recommend actually doing consent agenda first, because you can start, you can start hearing the few minutes late. You can't start them a few minutes early.
Okay, that's fine. But we'll do the consent agenda, and then item four, and then the remaining items. So do I have, with that revision, do I have a motion to approve the agenda as read?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. So before we go to consent agenda, I just want to, I think everyone knows, welcome Jeremy Marsette as our new Town Administrator. He started on Monday, so he's ending his first week in style with a Select Board meeting, including executive session. So thank you for joining us. And I know you've already met a lot of the people online, but I'm sure you'll be hearing from, and they'll be hearing from you on a lot of issues in town. So welcome, Board. Do I have a motion with respect to the consent agenda?
Moved to approve.
Okay, Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
And I'm aye as well. See, the consent agenda is approved. Now, I have a statement to read. We're going to start the annual tax classification hearing, as Diane indicated to be. Wendy Alassi will lead us through it. And so I just read this statement. The Sherburne Select Board is holding a virtual public annual tax classification hearing via Zoom tonight on Thursday, December 1st, 2022, at 7:30 PM to discuss whether all five classes of property, residential, open space, commercial, industrial, and personal, shall be taxed at the same rate or different rates for fiscal year 2023. Interested Sherburne taxpayers are welcome to attend the hearing tonight via Zoom, and during which both written and oral statements will be accepted and taken into consideration. So if I don't have any other questions, I turn it over to you, Wendy.
Thank you. Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Is Drew Koshal on so that as the Chair of the Board of Assessors, he can open the meeting? I do have Ed O'Neill, our Board Member, and Kathy Pierce, our Board Clerk.
I don't see him on here anywhere unless he's, we have some that say iPad and iPhones. So there he is. He just joined. Here he is.
Okay, great.
Just let him in.
Okay, great. Good evening, Drew.
Your timing's impeccable, Drew.
Thanks.
You got to open your meeting, dude.
And unmute.
Yep.
It's all. Um, it's all. I guess, I hadn't actually expected that. I guess, can we call it to order 7:31 PM? Do we need a motion?
You'll have to have a roll call vote of your committee members if you have a quorum.
Uh, let's see, there's a lot. Wendy, do we have?
We do. Kathy Pierce is here, and Ed O'Neill is here.
Aye. Kathy.
Longest to chairman.
All right, so Kathy?
Hi, how are you? Yes.
Good. I guess, first, do I have a second to open the meeting?
Second.
Second.
Great. All right. All in favor? I'll vote.
Aye.
Ed? All right. Eyes have it.
Okay, so we are ready to go. I will start with briefly explain again why we're having this hearing. Every year, the Select Board decides how they want to allocate for each class of property. So what Jeff just read is the four classes of real property, and then we have a class five, which is personal property, and you can shift the factor and you can shift the rate so that commercial properties or impersonal property could pay more than a residential. That being said, the Town of Sherburne is 95% residential and approximately 5% commercial, industrial, and personal property. So that's not something that we've ever done in Sherburne, but it is an option. So what I'll do is I'll just go through some information here, just to give you an idea of what's happened and what people can expect for their tax bills. The average tax bill for fiscal 2023, you'll get, you receive your actual tax bills at the end of December, is $14,339. That's a 700, average $700 increase from $13,638 from last year. And the average single-family home for this year is, hold on one second, I had it written down. Is, sorry, I thought I had it. It's actually $796,000 is the average single-family home value, up from $714,000 last year. So there's, there's an increase there. Again, this is an average of the property tax increase. There will be several properties that will be higher than $700. So we were in a revaluation, recertification year this year, and it's essentially a five-year audit with the Department of Revenue. So there were several changes to land home values, and your assessed value is supposed to be as close to 100% fair market value for sales that took place in calendar year 2021. Next year, I'm already seeing that there will be another increase of approximately, I'm thinking another maybe 10 to 12% for next year as well. So that's something that we need to keep in mind, because as the budget increases and values increase, the rate doesn't go down enough to lower a tax bill or keep it, you know, keep it from increasing. So that's just something that we should, you know, keep in mind during budget season. And Dan Sickle and I had a conversation about that. And we also don't have much growth coming in for the next few years. And so we'll go back down to our regular, you know, 125 to 150 probably for the next couple of years. I don't see any big projects on the horizon right now. So that's another thing that we need to keep, keep in mind for the coming years. And so for, for your, your job as the Select Board is to decide if you would like to offer a residential exemption, and that's where you can grant an exemption to a qualifying owner, an owner-occupied residence. Again, that doesn't really make sense in Sherburne, because there's not a lot of second homes. It's more for rental properties and communities like that. So you do have a choice to choose to offer a residential exemption. The Board of Assessors doesn't recommend a residential exemption, and we've never done one in Sherburne. The next one is the small commercial exemptions, where you can grant an exemption to a small business owner, but the business has to have less than 10 employees, and it's not a meaningful discount. You know, it's, it really isn't something that would work in Sherburne again, because we have 5% commercial, industrial, and personal property. And lastly is open space exemption, which we do not have open space, because we do not have the Community Preservation Act. So the one thing that you guys usually typically every year decide is if you want to vote for the 1%, or the residential factor of 1, which is you keep one rate, and that needs to be voted in. But other than that, you don't need to vote on the others unless you want to offer them.
Is there any discussion amongst Select Board members?
No, I think it's very clear. We do this every year. I would recommend, I would make a motion that we retain the uniform tax rate for fiscal year 2023.
I'll second that.
We don't do the residential exemption.
Right.
More the split, not the commercial.
Okay. Eric's second. So Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
I am aye as well.
I just have one comment before we go. First, thank you, Wendy, for the presentation and the.
Thank you.
Of us. Also, just to note, I think it's great that, I mean, I know taxes have gone up, so overall, it doesn't really affect people, but I think it makes more sense when we have a higher assessment and a lower tax rate. I think it's more, it just compares better to other towns. It, it makes, it makes it seem like, I just, I've always thought we, we, our valuations were too low and our tax rate was too high, and that, that should be, and I think you did a good job this year of getting that probably.
Thank you.
Should be.
What was it, $18 and something? I forget the number.
Point oh one.
Yes.
If you just go point oh two less, we could join three outstanding communities.
Now Jeremy's here. He's going to save us that much money, so.
Yeah, yeah. $15,000 for every penny. So, yes, so I think that that was not killing me. I wanted to get it under $18 so bad. But 1903 to 1801.
We'll take it.
Yeah, we'll, we'll take it. And I, you know, I think that it's great. And I want to thank the finance team and Diane and Jeremy hit the ground running, and we had a couple of brief conversations about the certification and final certification. So it's been, it's been great, and I don't have to do this for another five years. So I have to do other things, but I don't have to do this. So I'm very excited.
So thank you for, for doing the reclassification and presenting it, Wendy, and thank you to the Board of Assessors for joining us tonight. Drew, do you want to close your meeting then? As long as you opened it in open session?
Absolutely, yeah. I'll, so I'll move that, that we close the meeting for tonight.
Second.
All right, Catherine. Another roll call vote. I vote yes.
Aye.
All right, Catherine, that is her yes as well. Thank you all, and happy holidays.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Drew. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thanks.
So our next agenda item is George Fisk, who is going to join us at 7:45. It's only 7:40, and I don't see George yet. Do you, Diane? I haven't seen, I haven't let him into the room.
Aye, and you're muted.
I haven't, I don't see him here, but maybe we should do the appointment.
So let's go on to the consideration of appointments to the Sherburne Arts Council. There are three that were named, Tricia Caldercott, Arlene Chapin, and Elizabeth Panagoulis.
So. Yes, these are being recommended by the Arts Council Chair.
Now, before we vote, we sometimes like to let them just introduce themselves. So can you help me see if any of them are here tonight and would like to say hi?
Looking. I don't see any of them.
I don't either.
All right, I'll make a motion then to appoint Tricia Caldercott, Arlene Chapin, and Elizabeth Panagoulis to the Sherburne Arts Council for a term to expire June 15th, 2025.
You have a second?
Second.
Marion?
Aye.
George?
Aye.
Eric?
Aye.
I am aye as well. Very good. Next appointment is this Cable TV Advisory Board, Art Crandall, the same date, June 15th, 2025. I think we all know Art, and I don't see him here tonight.
He's not here either. Neither is Doug Yambow, so.
I'll do, move to appoint Arthur Crandall to the Cable TV Advisory Committee for a term to expire on 15th, 2025.
Thank you.
Second.
Marion?
Aye.
George? George, Eric?
Aye.
And I am aye as well. So, so thanks, Art.
So George is here now, by the way, Jeff.
Is he here? Thank you. George, are you, can we queue you up here to talk about the 350th celebration?
You're muted, George.
You need to unmute yourself.
There you are. Yeah, and I see Mary Moore is here too. So Mary's joining me in this presentation. So, so Jeff and everyone else, thank you so much for taking the time to meet with us. And I see, this is my first opportunity to see Jeremy Marsette, our new Town Administrator, in action. So Jeremy, welcome, and look forward to working with you and others over the coming years. So thanks for, for joining us. So Jeff, you know, I'm here because I had indicated quite a number of months ago that I thought there was a need to begin to plan for a celebratory event. The Town of Sherburne has been, has made a point of celebrating its significant anniversaries, and I've been involved with a number of them. The last one was our 325th in 1999. So if anybody puts a pencil to paper, you'll see that the 350th anniversary is fast approaching altogether too fast, I'm afraid. But 2024 is, is our 350th anniversary. And I've been talking with a number of people and, and sort of getting a sense of the level of interest and enthusiasm, and indeed, there is quite a bit. I have had conversations with, over the last number of months, with Mary Moore, and Mary is with us tonight. And I am pleased to let you know that Mary has agreed to chair the steering committee to do all the planning that's necessary over the coming months for 2024. And I know that she is going to chat with you a little bit tonight about the plans going forward. I continue to work with her and with her committee in really more of an advisory capacity, but because of my involvement in years past, and, and certainly a number of Sherburne events, that I'm happy to be helpful to the extent that I can be. So I guess what I would, I would also say, as I think you know, that one of the, one of the significant achievements in the 325th anniversary was the establishment of something known as the Sherburne Fund. And the Sherburne Fund has, has done quite a number of good deeds in town over the years, helping to underwrite some expenses for various local organizations. We have on the Sherburne Fund felt, though, that we'd like to take advantage of the 350th anniversary and create a, an endowment fund that we could grow to a level that would provide some significant funding for organizations. And so we're going to use that, use the 350th as an impetus. And in fact, you will see shortly in the mail, our first, our first mailing in trying to encourage people to participate in contributing to the, the 350th, the Endowment Fund for the Sherburne Fund. And so, and what you should know is we've, we have a target of 350,000, and I guess you can figure out where that number came from. But we're hopeful that we can raise 350,000 to add to our endowed fund and be able to do more and more good things here in Sherburne. So having said all of that, I think what I'd like to do is pass this off to Mary Moore and welcome her and see how she's doing and where, where her committee is going. So thank you.
Thanks, George. Can you guys hear me okay? I'm borrowing a Xbox headset tonight. So anyway, welcome Jeremy Marsette. We're very happy to have you on board, and Sherburne's a pretty special place. I think you'll agree. You know, you're going to love it here. But thanks, George, for the introduction. Jeff, if it's okay, I have two slides I thought I could share, just to kind of frame up what we're doing. So I'll share my screen.
Yep. You said.
Okay. Can you see that, everybody?
It's coming up. There it is. Yep.
Okay, so as George said, you know, it's, it's fast approaching 2024. We'll be celebrating the 350th year since incorporation. And so what we wanted to do was organize a steering committee. It's hard to say we want to organize everything all at once, but we thought if we organize a steering committee, then we can create some scale by pushing out, you know, a project plan to the town with a calendar of events, and then we can enlist and, and really get more and more volunteers and create a little bit of a flywheel with the event. So the goal is to get the steering committee organized first. We're hoping it's going to be about eight to 10 people. I've got seven yeses so far, so I'm quite excited that we have a good cross-section of, of the town already, and we'll publicize that group once it's finalized. But, you know, again, the, the point is really to create the steering committee, create a plan, almost like a project charter for the celebration, identify what some of the budget needs might be, if there's some funding or grant opportunities, you know, we want to make sure we identify those. I know Holliston just recently got a $15,000 grant for a celebration they had and rent them last year for something they had. So we want to make sure we can tap into that. We want to coordinate communication and public outreach, so everybody is up to speed on, on the progress. We want to provide you guys with regular updates, and we want to also make sure that, you know, it's very transparent and inclusive, what we're doing. So that's kind of the, the overall goal of the steering committee. And I put together just a, a quick little snapshot. I did a pivot off the Secretary of State's webpage to show that we are the only ones who will be celebrating our 350th in 2024. There are a few that just celebrated. It looks like Dunstable was, is 2023, and Tisbury, Nantucket, Edgartown, both had theirs recently. So we're in good company, and, you know, I think it's, it's going to be a pretty momentous celebration. And I think to George's point, you know, we want it to be memorable. We want it to be inclusive. We want it to really be an opportunity to share the rich history that we have here in Sherburne, and something that encourages community engagement and pride. And you can see, I've put together just a quick timeline of sort of the next few months, what we're anticipating. November, December is kind of getting the organizing going. We want to make sure that January, February, we do some initial outreach to all the groups in town. We want to get a website up and going, and then start to enlist the volunteer corps, as I'm calling it. And then by February and March, I think, you know, there may be some sort of a town warrant ask, so that we can anticipate, you know, maybe if there's some funding that the town can support this with. And then by April, May, you know, we want to promote it at town meeting, the Arts and Crafts Fair, making sure we start to socialize the calendar. And you can see the final bullet on all of these is really enlisting volunteers. So, you know, I expect it to be a dynamic and, you know, fun effort. I'm really looking forward to it. I appreciate George asking me to get involved. And, you know, we're just looking for your support. And, you know, Jeremy, I think this will be a great way for you to understand how special Sherburne is.
That's a great summary. Thank you, Mary. You can probably stop sharing. One thing on the warrant, though, you probably want to get a placeholder on the warrant now. I think the warrant will close. We're going to discuss that in a few minutes, but I think it'll be January 10th. So.
Okay.
What you can do is it doesn't need to be defined yet. I think you can just put a placeholder there, and then the content can be developed.
Right.
We, I don't know if it'd be, it would be sponsored by the Select Board, or who would sponsor it. We can think about that too. But if it's not the Select Board, sometimes we allow Town Council to advise on the language of the warrant, if there's any way that we want to finalize the language to make sure it's copacetic, if you will.
Great, thanks, Jeff.
Good. Any Select Board comments? Anybody, anyone else have any comments they want to add? I'm really appreciative of George's support, and Mary certainly, and I think it's a great, great initiative and should be really, really a great celebration.
I think it's important, Jeff, that we do keep you apprised of, of the, as, as we move forward, or as Mary's, the steering committee moves forward. And I'm sure that's her intent to, to keep the Select Board aware of what's going on, and, and obviously look for support, but also, you know, input that you might provide. And, and we have talked about the, the need for a placeholder. I have to say, unless Mary knows more than I do, we're not quite sure what the, what the extent of that should be, but it's, it's really intended to be sort of some startup funds to, you know, and there'll have to be some publicity. The best way in which that's done still needs to be determined, but undoubtedly, there'll be some level of expense. And then also, in terms of who, who, who has control over the, that money and how that's to be determined, I think is, is a matter for a little further discussion, not, not now, but soon.
Sounds good, I think. Look forward to hearing more. Thank you for joining us today.
Well, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Jeremy, you'll see me soon.
Great.
Whether you want to or not.
Super. Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Okay, good night.
Good night.
The excited on the agenda is, Marion, do you want to lead us through, you created the draft letter on mass housing, which I have read in support. So, and it was circulated to the group on the Greenwood Homes initially. So and it was circulated to the group on the Greenwood Homes initially.
All right. I created the draft letter. We we looked at a an early draft a couple of weeks ago, I think. That's been refined since the last time you saw this letter, that is, the select words on this letter. I I did make one substantial change. And that is that the Concom actually had commented on this. And so I made a sort of minor change. I can pull up my screen if you like.
Sure, go ahead.
And see what what I did. Hold on a second. Here we are. I'm not starting from the beginning of the letter. You can see there are various underlined headings here. I'm looking at the section on public health and environmental concerns, always related to water resources. This is ever the theme in Sherburne, and this letter is is no different. But just to remind the public that may be here, this letter pertains only to the six house 40B development on Greenwood Street, where the lots are just under an acre.
And therefore. It's just four, just four houses, Marion, not six.
Oh, sorry. Did I say six?
Yeah, four, four houses.
Four houses on Greenwood Street. Sorry. On lots of just under an acre. And preliminary plans have been presented, but of course, the detailed analysis will be done with the zoning board of appeals with a comprehensive permit application. But these four lots are being submitted as a 40B application. They have been submitted to the state so that 25% need to be affordable. That's one house needs to be at or below the 80%. Needs to be sold to people whose income is at or below 80% of the median income for the region. So this is a fairly simple letter because it's not a very complicated development. And the the letter, I presume, will be posted on the town website. But we're we're approaching the deadline to send it to Mass Housing, the state subsidizing agency for affordable housing. I changed one line for the select board who have read this letter before. I changed one line to include the Conservation Commission comment that the wetland buffer zone should be preserved. And in the existing plan, they are preserved. So it's not a criticism. It's just don't change that portion of the plan. Other than that, I've attached to the latter the comments of the five boards and committees that commented in some detail. And the the select board letter, of course, just summarizes those those comments. Planning Board, Town Planner, Energy and Sustainability, Board of Health, Concom, and Groundwater Protection Committee all responded. We had a couple of responses from citizens that were actually talking about the Washington Street larger 40B. That's a separate project. And the letter on that will not go to the same agency. So we have to deal with that separately. There was one letter of concern about the the Greenwood Homes project. I want to mention here, though, that people already are aware that this is part of a larger project on the same property. A second 40B is being proposed of 40 apartments in a single building. And we've had a site visit on that. This letter does not deal with that. But I'm mentioning it only because we will be putting together a comment letter to the state. And we've already gotten over 10 comment letters from abutters and and residents. In the past, we've sometimes attached the resident comment letters to our letter to the state as attachments. A couple of the letters that we've gotten, I have to say, include kind of personal attacks on the developer that are not appropriate for us to send to the state. I want to say that you're you're if if a citizen, if any citizen wants to comment on a development, it's totally fine to say whatever you like to our town boards and committees or to the zoning board. We're we're an open town. We want to hear everybody's opinion. It's totally fine. But that sort of comment, we really cannot send on to the state as part of our letter because it reflects badly on the town. So just so you know, if if people don't see their letter attached, that's why. And it I guess it's up to the select board to decide for certain developments where there are many letters coming in from citizens. I think it might be a better policy to simply summarize in our select board letter what the citizen, the major citizen citizen concerns are, rather than attach all of the verbatim emails, partly just out of out of consideration for the people who have to review it at the state, but also just to make the whole thing easier to read and easier to digest by the state agency. So your comments are always heard, speaking to the public now. But we won't be attaching those letters to the report to the state, just so you know.
I think I saw Eric had his hand raised. You can probably you can unshare now, Marion, totally.
Okay, thanks. Unless there are other comments about the letter.
Yeah, I mean, my comments are about the letter.
All right, I'm sorry. Then maybe keep sharing and go ahead, Eric.
But actually, I have two comments. One is actually right on that page, and this is probably my own lack of knowledge. I'm glad that the conservation discussed that to talk about shore protection of wetlands, buffer zone. And a buffer zone is 100 feet from wetlands. And I don't know if it's within that or not, but that is state regulated. Does a state have a no alteration 50-foot setback? Or is that just a town? And I don't know if it's from the commission is here or not. For some reason, I thought the the state did not have a a no alteration setback. They only had a buffer zone and alteration of wetlands. And I don't know. And that's something I just know if that that's relevant. That's all it is.
Good question. Good question, Eric. Is anyone from Concom here who could come in?
I didn't see anyone on the call.
Does anyone happen to know?
But you're not referring to the state. It just says well, well, and delineations provided with the plans.
It said, well, according to the wetland delineation by the plan, there are no wetlands on the site and no planned disturbance of 50-foot wetland setbacks area. You know, I mean, it almost says applied means not applicable. And this is this stood out to me because I always thought the state had a buffer zone, had no alteration of wetlands. And I thought it did not. I did not think it had a, like many communities, Framiem, Sherburne, they have no alteration zones, and you're allowed to have that, you know, when it was bridged. And I just didn't think it was applicable. And it's small. It's a small thing. If no one's here to speak of it, we can submit it in the other way. My second comment is more less specific in this. It might be too late to add it. At least in the summary, do we want to at least acknowledge or maybe in the in the intro, acknowledge that this is part of a larger project or not part, but you know, this this parcel land is going to have the beyond the much larger 40B on there.
Oh, yes, I have done that in a couple of places.
There's one spot right there.
Okay.
Right, the the last the last sentence actually of that page. It'll be important to understand overall groundwater capacity and recharge septic element, surface water flow on and off the entire 18-acre site that includes Greenwood Homes and the 40-unit Sherburne Homes apartment building, including after periods of extreme precipitation. And I kind of repeat that in the summary. We anticipate reviewing the impacts of both 40B projects on the entire 18 acre.
Okay. I didn't see the size. I didn't see the previous one, which actually stated the size of it. And I saw that in the 40B. I didn't see the previous one. Okay.
Okay, great. And the other comments, other than that, we will put it together and send it off. It's already put together. We'll send it off.
Yeah, we can decide. Do I have to sign it? Who did we have sign the letter? I can't remember, Marion.
I think I signed it just because I wrote the darn thing. So but you can decide.
I'm fine with that.
Then, of course, it's from the entire select board, as you can see at the top.
Yes.
Okay.
That sounds good. Is anyone on the select board? You can probably stop sharing now.
Right.
So we have one comment in the chat from Craig Sherman. Craig, do you want to speak? You haven't raised your hand. You're welcome to. Not sure where you are.
While while we wait, I should also say that this is just one stage in the process.
Right.
Proposal will be before the zoning board of appeals for a comprehensive permit. And that will be a series of hearings that goes on for as long as it needs to go on. So individuals and citizens will have plenty of opportunity to comment at that stage.
Yeah, particularly on the details, more of the details.
Right.
Well, it doesn't seem to want to comment, so I don't have anything further. So should we take a vote to submit the letter then? Is that what you recommend, Marion?
That's what I'm recommending.
So do you want to make the motion?
I move that we send the letter as written to Mass Housing within the deadline, which is December 5.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Marion.
I.
George.
Hi.
Eric.
I.
I am I as well.
But just to acknowledge, the the chat question is, why is this? I think, meaning, why is this letter? Why is this so favorable to development? Yeah, that's it's 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 a long answer. We, by law, by the 40B law, the town can comment on the development as proposed. We are given certain things that we can comment on. We've commented on them all. I would say that it's a it's a fair letter and the select board has agreed. So I think I'd be happy to speak individually to anyone who questions that after the meeting.
Good. Well, thank you.
And and just to point out, this is just just to remind everybody, this is just on the four homes on Greenwood, not the 40 units on Washington Street. That's a so totally separate letter that we'll be doing in the next month or so.
Correct.
Which I think, to Craig's point, probably won't be as favorable as because there are more concerns with a project of that size compared to the four homes on Greenwood.
Right. And we're only comparing the four homes to our existing, you know, regulations. It's a factual review, not an opinionated review. Okay, so let's move on to item six on the agenda, which is the other other part of the 18 acres. The Washington Zero Washington Street is they're calling it, I think. And we did have a freezing cold tour of the site. It was two weeks ago or so. And Franklin Miller was there, which was nice from D H C D. I he I met him and then I've exchanged a couple of emails with him. Seems like a really nice guy and really interesting, interested in our project. And he's responsible for the entire state. So he's, when we told him Sherburne was far, he said, no, it's not. I've been way out in Western Mass for these meetings also. So anyway, he's been very responsive and supportive to work with us. So do you want to talk about the the deal here is, I think, the deadline, correct me if I'm wrong, is like the 23rd of December or something right now? Is that what it is?
That's right.
And we're asking for a 30-day extension would give us essentially to the 23rd of January.
Right. So we we have a letter drafted to send to D H C D asking for the 30-day extension. We need approval from the board to to ask that extension and send the letter. So I moved I moved that we send the letter asking for a 30-day extension.
Second.
Second, Marion.
I.
George.
Hi.
Eric.
I.
I am I as well. That's great. And I know that they're receptive to that. You know, Franklin's already indicated that he knew that this was, you know, we kind of we're rushing to have that tour and 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 learn about the site. And it's way more complex, so it's going to take work.
Right. More impactful development that we really need to be. There's going to be more discussion and 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 talk about it, I'm sure amongst the Board of Health and Conservation and everybody else, a lot of concern. We've seen a lot of letters from citizens already concerned about the aquifer and the septic and and how it's going to affect neighboring properties.
Yep. And the Bailey Circuit Trail goes right through there, too.
Absolutely.
First, not the Bailey Trail itself, but the lead into the Bailey Trail. All right. So I think we've covered that one. We're doing pretty well tonight. The annual town meeting timeline Diane has updated it. We, I don't know what the high school did. They somehow ditched the theater group or something. They've given us Thursday night back. Not that we need it, but is that what happened, Jackie?
Oh, hi. Thank you, Jeff. No, that is not correct. So they're they're still having their first performance that Thursday night. So we got Wednesday night as the backup and it's in the high school gym.
Uh-oh, okay.
Well, that's not what's on the
That's not what's on here.
I said, what I did is that's not what's on the schedule that's in the packet.
Okay, I don't I didn't see the schedule, so I apologize, but I know.
That's okay. That's fine.
So it's Wednesday, the 26th?
Yeah, it's Wednesday night and it's in the high school.
The 26th, Diane, the 26th.
Wednesday, Wednesday, the 26th. Yep.
In the high school gym.
Okay.
Because they'll have a rehear- they have a rehearsal that Wednesday night. That's why we can't be in Lincoln Commons. But to have it Thursday, we thought because parking and everything would have been a nightmare on Thursday. So that's why.
Their shows is crazy. That's true.
Yeah, so Wednesday.
Confidence in Mary Wolf that we'll get it all done on Tuesday.
Yeah, I am too. Because no, no one's going to want to sit in bleachers, I think, in the gym.
No, we're going to do our best to do it one night. Mary's committed to that, so.
Well, I can tell you, it rained my oldest son's year, so we had a high school graduation in the high school gym. And now you were allowed two guests per student. So.
Yeah, my son graduated and it was brutally hot that day.
Very hot in there. So that's another way to shorten the meeting. All right. So that sounds good. Is there any other comments on the agenda? I mean, the proposed scheduled meetings?
Nope.
We're good.
We have to vote on the opening and closing the warrant, right?
Yes, we do. Let me look at what those dates are. Do you have those handy, Diane?
It says we're going to open it tonight.
Yep.
And
Was it the January 10th?
January 10th, I think it said, right, Jeremy? Diane?
Yes, January 10.
5:00 P M.
Okay, so you are you want to make a motion then, George, to open it tonight and
Yeah, I'll make a motion to open the warrant tonight, December 1st, 2022, to be closed on January 10th, 2023. Or do we just make a motion to open it and then we make a motion to close it when it comes?
You want to do it that way? The tough thing is always the citizens petitions who aren't aware what the dates are, but.
Jeremy, how do we do that? Do you know? Do we do I do them both tonight or?
I think you definitely want to set an expectation of that that's when you anticipate to to close the warrant.
Okay. So yeah, why don't we do it that way then? I'll say open the warrant December 1st, 2022, to be closed on January 10th, 2023.
At 5:00 P M. Okay.
Mended if we need to in January. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Marion.
I.
George.
Hi.
Eric.
I.
I am I as well. That's excellent.
Now everybody can start flooding Diane with the warrants.
And your budgets and the operating budget also. So that's good. I don't have any other agenda items other than routine business select board reports. Are there any select?
If you have a hand up from a citizen, I think.
Oh, that's all right. You see, Joni Murphy, do you want to make a comment on some? I'm not sure what your hand is up for.
Yes, I do have a question. I'm sorry for the delay. It took me a little while to figure out how to raise my hand. It's back on the 75 Greenwood Street. I'm sorry, on the Greenwood Street project and your letter. I'm kind of in sync with the chat question about the letter being favorable. Can you explain why you're happy to have four houses on that parcel when it's two acre zoning?
Sure. This is not a question of happy or not happy. This is a state law that requires us to accept developments. I except it requires us to consider developments that offer 25% affordable. developments that uh offer twenty five percent affordable units. And this is being submitted under that state law. Okay. We don't have enough affordable housing in Sherburne, so uh, given that we don't have enough affordable housing, we don't have the ten percent that the of affordable that the state requires. We we cannot just uh turn down a a and a proposal that's made under the forty B law at the state. That's why the developer applied to the state first. Then we got a letter from the state explaining that they have a proposal that uh they want us to consider under the forty B law. We can make but that that's where that's why.
So it's a matter of that you have to rather than you want to?
Yes.
Exactly.
Okay.
The forty B law.
That's part of the forty B statute is Johnny is that they can get around our local zoning bylaws by going through this forty B process, by going to the state first, unfortunately.
Yeah, I'm I'm aware of that. It just seems from this little snippets of the letter that we were able to see, it seemed awfully encouraging, and I guess that's that's just me reading into the letter without seeing the whole thing, so I appreciate the explanation.
Yep.
They can get around regulations also. They sometimes get around even Board of Health regulations for septic system, and they apply the state septic guidelines, Title V guidelines instead of uh uh Sherburne's regulations, which are stricter. So the whole the whole forty B chapter is intended to promote affordable housing, to try to uh limit towns' abilities to 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 thwart them.
So um, there's a a next door post about this topic, and yesterday Grace Shepherd posted a comment saying that the forty B does not allow them to get around well issues. Is is that true?
I think it's a complex answer, but the Board of Health will be, when we do the uh comprehensive permit uh, which is led by the Z B A, they get input from the Board of Health on well and septic issues. So.
And there are there are state uh, there are state guidelines for wells in the in the D E P. Those guidelines are set. People still have to uh, you know, follow the rules uh concerning well and septic. It's just that the rules at the state level are a little different from those uh of Sherburne.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate the explanations and sorry to to cause a delay in your agenda.
No, no, it's good to speak up, and also the full letter will be posted. Uh, Marion, once we have it available, uh, a full letter will be on the website.
Thank you.
Thanks for uh joining the meeting.
Sure.
Okay, back to routine business. Are there any select board reports? Well, we I don't know if Mary Moore's still on here, that uh tomorrow is Elizabeth Johnson's last day, so they're having a little celebration for her and uh we planned to do it originally. I don't know if you want to just uh make a uh post-meeting public statement of some kind, Mary?
Well, I just, I I would like to just celebrate Elizabeth Johnson and her thirty four years of tremendous service to the town. She um I think Elaine Fisk hired her as librarian thirty four years ago, and she's been faithfully serving and delivering on the mission of the library, and I think we should all be tremendously grateful for what she has delivered and the uh, you know, just just generations of families who've benefited from her leadership is is tremendous. So I I'm so grateful, and I feel very lucky to have my path in life crossed with her, and she's a good friend, and we're going to have a nice luncheon at my house tomorrow with the staff, and um yeah, she's 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 one of a kind, so we should all, I I if if you haven't already congratulated her, I hope you will, and when we do have the ribbon cutting, we'll see her in person, and she'll be happily retired and, you know, doing something fabulous, I'm sure.
And and one uh sort of a side note to that is we have approved uh, the trustees approved Liz Anderson as the interim librarian, who's been there. I think you all know her. She's really terrific and has been doing a lot of work um uh in the library, so she 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 will be the continuity and uh interim director or uh library. Okay, I don't have
One one more quick thing, just not to put Jeremy on the spot, but as as it is his first week, I'd love to hear you know, just a little bit about how the first week's gone, what you know. Um, and you know, if there's anything you wanted to say to anybody about like what what you're looking to do or people you want to meet with, whatever.
Sure, thanks, George. Is that all right, Jeff?
Sure, go ahead, Jeremy.
Thanks. Um, yeah, I it's been a a real pleasure, actually, um, getting to know folks. Um, I've I've met a lot of folks, a lot of um your committee members, town staff, certainly many more to 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 get together with and and chat with. Um, and really, actually, I want to put a shout out to Diane. She's really made the transition very easy. Um, you know, very really thank Diane uh for for all the help she has. She's she's given to to kind of set me up and and get me up up and running, so really uh big thanks to her. Um, there was a nice uh coffee gathering on Monday, um, meeting town hall staff. Uh, I had a great tour of the library later uh that day. Um, had meetings with Klaus Omen, the I T coordinator. I've had a meeting with Chief Galvin and a tour of the police station, but a meeting with Chief Ward and a tour of both of the station, fire stations. Uh, I've had several meetings with your Public Works Director and Facilities Director, Sean Colleen. Um, and actually have a meeting scheduled with him tomorrow uh to tour some of his facilities. Uh, have had a number of meetings with your interim Director of Finance, uh Deb, um, discussing the budget process and I'm happy to report that all the information for Schedule A has been submitted to the debt, the state D L S uh for certification of free cash, so um, her her team was able to get that in this week. Attended the the Climate Action Plan kickoff meeting on Tuesday night, which was great to see. We're very well attended. Um, uh, good shout out, a big shout out to your uh sustainability coordinator coordinators, Dorothea Von Hura and uh G Gino Carlucci um for organizing that event. Um, and actually, yeah, so the highlight of the week so far has been meeting uh Sergeant Nol- Sergeant Nolte and Officer West. Um, they they made a nice visit um and uh introduced themselves, so um, it's it's been busy, um, but very enjoyable. Um, and you know, you will, you have all made it um quite easy and um, really looking forward to to get getting to know you all, so.
I'll try to stop in when I can. I work at a state, but I do want to sit down and meet, talk to you in person at some point, so.
Great. Great. There's actually the three uh announcements, if if it's okay, Jeff, um, just uh some points of information that that the folks might like to be aware of. Next on December eighth, next week, uh Tri County Vocational High School has a public information meeting scheduled at seven at at six P M. In Franklin uh regarding their building project. Uh, that's been made aware to us. Uh, also, Sean has been working with EverSource to to get some utility poles cleaned up uh at the intersection of North Main Street, Coolidge Street, and Lake Street, hopefully leading to some more reliability and electrical system. I hope when you get that done before winter, and if uh EverSource has scheduled that work hopefully for next week, so the two to three days next week, there might be a little uh traffic interruption in that intersection. Um, and also a heads up on Tuesday, December tw- twentieth at seven P M. Uh, Rabbi Fogelman of the Native Shabbat Center is hoping to host an event uh to light menorah uh on the town green in front of town hall, so just wanted to get that out there. Um uh, more news will come as far as as a holiday tree will will also be uh set up on the town green. Uh, so more news on that at a later date. But uh, it's it's been a pleasure uh meeting everyone. I've got a a number of uh things lined up for next week as well. Um, meeting with your the Chair of your Advisory Committee. Uh, meeting with uh introducing myself to the Board of Assessors. Uh, a meeting with the EverSource Electric Community Liaison next week, trying to uh, you know, kind of get a little download from Storm last night and uh looking forward to, you know, what what work they may be doing and uh getting plugged into their um their outage reporting system called Municipal Hub. Uh, so um, meeting with them next Wednesday. Uh, we have our first department head meeting or my first department head meeting with your with your folks on December fourteenth. The Council on Aging is scheduled a a coffee uh uh to to introduce me on January fifth. Uh, and I've been invited along with Sean to the Council on Aging Men's Group uh lunch in January. Uh, so um, things are are filling up on the calendar, and that's great. Uh, so I welcome anybody to reach out to me. Um, I I and introduce themselves. Um, and uh, you know, if if you don't hear from me uh directly, um, you know, please reach out. It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you. Do I have a motion to adjourn? To the Patriots and Bills game.
Perfect timing. I think the game is just starting, so. I'll I'll make a motion to adjourn.
And I'll second.
Marion.
I.
George.
Hi.
Eric.
Hi.
I am I as well. So thank you for great meeting tonight, everyone.
Have a good night.
Good night, everybody.